First and foremost, y'all want to bear it with me. I forgot my glasses in my other truck.
Can you wear anyone else's?
There's some. Just reading glasses?
Yeah, that's what he says, reading glasses.
Oh, mine. You can see your walls.
Blessings did you give him?
That's good ones there. Be it resolved, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enter into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2, day 3711. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specified legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. One, Old Blacksburg Middle School Development Agreement, HS Development LLC Agreement, former Blacksburg High School property. One, discuss consideration or interview of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary or resignation as fist officers, appointee or employees of any public body. One, alcohol safety action program, Parks and Rec Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, you call roll please.
Aye.
Mr. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Where is the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has conveyed a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where is section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meetings requirement by Virginia laws were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as was identified in the motion convey the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Madam Secretary, you call roll please.
I do.
Says motion?
So moved. Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Fenn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Cutt?
Aye, but I need to provide some explanation. I did step out of the room for the discussions in regards to the BASAP board. I am independently appointed to that board from a different body than the Board of Supervisors, and I personally did not think it would be appropriate to vote on a new member from this board, and so I recuse myself and was not part of the discussions and left the room.
Mr. Kowski?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye, but I stepped out when discussion of HS Development LLC agreement was discussed.
Okay.
Invocation.
At this point, let's rise for a moment of silence, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Presentation, recognitions, and awards will be Virginia Department of Transportation.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'll give you a few updates on some of the maintenance things that have been going on, maybe a little bit of construction that we're gonna start and maybe getting ready to start despite the lovely weather we're having right now. The last month has been a little bit of a challenge for us. Even just last week, we had cruise out for snow and ice that didn't amount to quite what we thought, but we had to be ready later on in the day. Friday, if you recall, we did get a bunch. Along with the snow, obviously, you all know the story. It's been wind, it's been rain, it's been a lot of flooding, and this is also the season where we're trying to get as many of the potholes to stay at least up to level with that for a while. So between the gravel roads and potholes and doing the weather, that's pretty much the maintenance things that we've been handling. A couple of pipe things that we have got, cleaned up one on Plum Creek, about a 50-foot pipe out there, McCoy Road down on Den Hill. Some of those are actually some pipe that we're still trying to get replaced and fully repaired from some of the flooding and storms back in September and October. Construction projects we will be putting out to bid, Yellow Sulphur Road, the last part of that later on this year, as well as Sydney Church Road, and then some of the big projects that are still going on. We started the replacement of the bridges on 81 at exit 114 of Route 8. There'll be some signals involved with that, temporary signals, but that's gonna be quite a lengthy project. And then, of course, the 81 bridges over the New River are going on and have been going on for a while. Mentioned Yellow Sulphur and Sydney Church. With those two, hopefully being completed by this time next year, we're gonna be looking at having a six-year plan public hearing. We've scheduled that for next month, your first meeting of the month, and so we'll have a public hearing where we can get some ideas on some other roads we can probably add. The two big ones that we've had over the last few years, Yellow Sulphur and Sydney Church dropping off the plan, there will be room to add a couple more. So it'll be a good opportunity. We've already had some inquiries about the public hearing. I see the county has sent out some letters to some interested citizens who had asked for that date, so I think we'll have a good number of people at that, and that'll be next month. That's all the planned stuff I have. I'll take any questions aboard right now.
Do you have any questions?
Superintendent Shepherd?
I just have a couple of locations for, and I know you're working on potholes, but I've had some calls. One is on Glade Road near Mount Zion, and on Mount Zion, there's a couple of pretty bad ones. One that's probably needs attention first, though, I got a call from the chief of the rescue squad in McCoy, Sterling Drive, and he said it was in really bad shape. I haven't been out there, but...
That's just off McCoy, just to the left, isn't it, off there?
Right.
Yeah, I know that road.
That's all I have. I just gotta... David, in the town of Christiansburg, do they handle all the primary roads too, or do you all do that?
Yes, town of Christiansburg maintains all the roads within the town limits, and they are now in fact doing, administering the construction projects that are within the town limits as well. So they're going on right now out by Food Line along John Silver's and Roanoke Street right there, and they will be starting another one near the rec center, like a project for that Cambridge Street intersection.
Now, I was thinking more on the pothole schedule.
Yeah, yes.
Because on Route 11 and 460, which comes right through the town.
Yeah.
That's, we have some issues there, too, so...
The town has it right from the, you see the sign at the top of the mountain, if you're coming from Shawsville all the way through Route 11 through town and on towards Radford Road to the limits out, going toward Radford.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have a couple, and I've introduced you to Mr. Dr. John Kennedy, who lives at 4660 Ray Ridge Drive up here in Blacksburg on Brush Mountain. There is a section between Ray Ridge Drive and Mount Mission Church Road on the road of Bel Air Drive that's unpaved and isn't a VDOT road, and you said that you would look into what it would take. It's a 200-foot little piece of road that, for some reason, didn't get taken care of, and so people who live up that way have to drive out of their way to get to Blacksburg or get to Giles, and it would be a good piece to just wrap up. Changing the subject, pothole website. What's the pothole website for us?
Pothole website?
Isn't there somewhere that we go online and we say, "Ah, I've got a pothole on Nellie Skate Road"?
There's our template, I don't know the number for it. We have our normal work order number, where you can call an 800 number and report them, and those get sent directly to, get routed directly to actually the area headquarters that it involves.
Okay, so the 800 number is on your website somewhere?
Yes.
And it's called Pothole?
It's just the, it's just our, you can call for, you know, down the tree, or whatever kind of maintenance issue it might be. They're mostly potholes now.
I encourage everyone to go on to that, find that telephone number and start putting in your potholes. And then, as a result of the MVP pipeline, I understand that you all had some really great improvements out on Mount Tabor, including the shoulders. There is a lot of knee down in Catawba Road, too. So I heard that on one side of Mount Tabor, the shoulder looks great, but for some reason, on the other side, it wasn't done, so if you can check on that, too. The other question that I have is, clearly, that was necessary because of all the wear and tear, but there's also probably a lot of wear and tear between that spot and going into town in the county property, county part of the road. Will, when MVP gets all done, that be improved, because I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of wear and tear that wouldn't have been there if the trucks weren't going and stuff like that?
Yeah, we'll have to evaluate the, look at all the damage, the condition, just general conditions of the road, whether it's due to the trucks or not, but we'll take a look at the highly traveled routes for that and patch them as we can, but probably not invest a lot of overlay in it until we expect the traffic to have, you know, gone down. So I don't wanna put a whole lot of money out there and just have it torn up again, but that said, it's gotta be maintained to a certain level.
So is MVP at all reimbursing you all for any of that, you know, really it's repaid?
Not for that, sort of outlying extensive area. Part of their permit was to do what was there, where they're crossing, and to keep that, their entrance in that area, but where they, if they're driving legal loads on other parts of the road, even though it's kind of extraordinary use, higher than normal, it being a legal load, it's just VDOT's responsibility to maintain the roads under legal load traffic.
And then, Galleon Ridge Road is where Bellevoe Estate Winery is, and I'd love to get that to be paved also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
Moving to public address. This is a time that the board will listen to your comments and information. We will not be responding to you, and I'm gonna ask the county administrator if he'd call out these names.
Be glad to. First one we have this evening is Glenn Chilcock, I believe. And if you will, when you come forward, if you'll state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Glenn Chilcock, and I live at 125 Wooden Shoe Court in Christiansburg. Chair King and members of the board, I am speaking tonight in support of raises for the employees of Montgomery County. Specifically, I'm requesting that the funds allocated to Montgomery County Public Schools not be earmarked in separate categories so that the school board has the ability to provide employee raises. I'm also requesting that the current tax rate remain the same or increase in order to build and renovate schools in Christiansburg. Even though I am employed by Montgomery County Public Schools, I am also a county employee. I work for you and all of the citizens in Montgomery County. I am a loyal, invested employee. Please honor my hard-working commitment, not with kind words, but with the funds so my wife and I, who is also a teacher, can receive a raise. If you are wondering whether or not I am worthy of a raise, you have an open invitation to come to any of my music classes at Kipps Elementary School. At the end of the day, I think you'd be proud of the work you see and committed to allocating the proper funds to help me and all of the Montgomery County employees. I am one of 2,500 employees in the school system. I am one of 897 teachers. The employees of Montgomery County work and live here. We buy local, we eat local, and we help make our county the wonderful place it is. Please take this into consideration when deciding on the budget. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker on public address is Aaron Bull.
Good evening, I'm Aaron Bull. I live at 2422 Bridge Road in Blacksburg. I'm also a fifth grade teacher at Christiansburg Elementary. Last week, I and about 40 of my fellow educators attended the budget work session to hear Mr. Meadows' proposed budget for 2019-20. I was pleased with the reassessment. The county is gaining six cents worth of revenue without raising the tax rate. This will be a much-needed increase in funding for the county and the school system. One thing that really resonated with me was Mr. Meadows' comments that the biggest resource for the county was its employees, and that they deserved a salary increase to show that appreciation. He is correct. The people in this county are our biggest resource. School employees serve the same purpose and deserve the same appreciation. That is why I was concerned when less revenue was allocated to the school system operating fund than expected. All students in Montgomery County deserve a highly qualified caring and committed teacher. To recruit and retain these teachers, we need the funds to implement the 3.5% salary increase passed by the General Assembly. Based on the increasing cost of living and student debt, teachers need a salary increase every year to be able to stay in the profession. With the funds the Board of Supervisors currently allocated being split into construction funding and the general fund for schools, these increases are in question. If the county does not provide schools for the local match, then we lose the funds allocated by the General Assembly. Currently, beginning teachers here are paid $5,000 less than Salem City, $2,500 less than Radford City, and $2,000 below Roanoke County. This makes attracting teachers a challenge. In addition, mid-career teachers like myself are paid less than Salem, Roanoke City, and Roanoke County. For teachers at the top of the scale, Montgomery County still ranks behind Salem, Roanoke County, Roanoke City, and Radford. There are teachers who carpool from the Park and Ride in Christiansburg to Salem to get that extra $5,000 a year. Due to the county's ability to pay, state funds are allocated using a composite index. According to this, Montgomery County has more in common with Virginia Beach, Stanton, York, and Bauta Top than our surrounding counties. In these statewide bands, Montgomery County is ranked 10th out of 11 counties that have a similar ability to pay for beginning and mid-career teachers. We're still 9th out of 11 at the top of the scale. Just as Mr. Meadows said last week, employees are the best resource for Montgomery County and deserve to be compensated as such. Each year, I come and speak at these meetings because it seems like every year it's the same issue. The Board of Supervisors has not raised the tax rate in over five years. For the last two years, the response when I or others have asked for additional revenue has been wait till the reassessment. This year, we've had the reassessment and the funds are there. However, I'm concerned about the way they're being allocated. School construction is important. I teach at Christiansburg Elementary, which is 196 students over capacity. We have five mobile units as classrooms, and this creates safety concerns due to walking outside, especially in the weather, but also since they're old. We've had two instances this winter where classes have had to be moved inside to other classrooms because of heating issues. Having funds to build appropriate schools for the Christiansburg strength is important, but there are ways to address this without taking money from the general fund. Flexibility is needed because personnel is a serious concern, too. In addition to the need for adequate compensation, enrollment is up by 224 students since 2009, and we're short, we're short by 35 teachers. By allocating funds to the general fund, it will give the superintendent and school board the flexibility to allocate funding for construction and address these other issues. By allocating the 1.5 cents that was earmarked for construction to the school operating budget, we can solve all these issues. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next speaker on our list this evening is Matthew Fintris.
Good evening. Board Chair King and board members, my name is Matthew Fintris. I reside at 395 Summit Ridge Road in Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm speaking on my own. I appreciate you listening to our county administrator, Craig Minus, speak last week like the other two on the county's importance of a budget that takes care of county employees and how the county employees are the most important resource. I agree with that, and I was kinda inspired to write a little bit more. In a sense, I am one of your workers. I live in Christiansburg. My three children attend Montgomery County schools, one high school, one middle, and one elementary. My wife works as a teacher in Christiansburg. I teach at a school in Blacksburg. I pay my taxes in Montgomery County. I shop in Montgomery County. I attend church in Montgomery County. You could say I'm a typical Montgomery County citizen. I am Montgomery County. Montgomery County Public Schools has about 1,900 full-time employees. They too live here. They pay their taxes here. They shop here. They send their children to schools here. They are employees in Montgomery County. They are Montgomery County. There are about another 600 employees that are considered part-time or substitute teachers for Montgomery County Public Schools. They live here. They spend their money here. They too are employees in Montgomery County. They are Montgomery County. There are about 10,000 children that attend Montgomery County Public Schools. They live here. They spend their parents' money here. They dream the American dream here. They are the future workers for Montgomery County. They are to Montgomery County. Each of those 10,000 children that attend Montgomery County Public Schools has parents that love them. They have hopes and dreams for their children's future. We all serve them. They too are Montgomery County. As a citizen of Montgomery County, I ask the two boards to work together for all the people of Montgomery County. Allow the school board to use the earmarked capital funds for compensation for our county employees. They are Montgomery County. We are all Montgomery County. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Randy Heflin, I believe.
Good evening. My name is Randy Heflin. I live at 1861 New London Court, a physics faculty member in Virginia Tech, and also the associate dean for research in the College of Science there. I'm here to speak to you about the Preserve at Walnut Springs plans. I understand you had a first meeting about them last, last meeting that you had, I don't remember exactly when that was. Just wanted to let you know, although there was nobody there speaking about that development from the neighboring community, it was not for lack of interest on our part, it was for some communication issue that happened somewhere. I just wanted to let you know that for both of the planning commission meetings, we had over a dozen residents in the areas surrounding that plan development who all spoke earnestly and convincingly about the negative impact that that plan development, as it is currently planned, will have on the surrounding community. So I wanted to take a few minutes to tell you some of the thoughts that I think represent a lot of what people have been saying about this. First of all, though, I would like to say that there was a lot of dismay on our part that despite the recommendation by staff to not approve that plan, forwarded to you that there was a unanimous vote on the behalf of the planning commissioners to approve the plan. And I wanted to comment in particular about one of the comments made by one of the planning commissioners who, right before the vote, said that he thought that it was not appropriate to penalize the developers for things that were beyond their control. He was speaking about this with respect to the fact that there's only one possible entrance/exit to the neighborhood, and there are a lot of concerns about how that one single exit with 341 planned dwellings is gonna have an extreme impact on Prices Fort Growth. And so what I would like to say is that it's not a matter of penalizing them. I think it's your right and responsibility to make sure that every development is appropriate to the constraints and qualities of the land that it occupies. The developers knew full well that they were developing an area that was only going to have an entrance and exit, so that should have been taken into account when they planned their development. So 341 dwellings is just too many to try to funnel through this one limited entrance and exit. So I would like to mention a couple of other things with respect to this development. One is, based on the plans, they indicate in the plans that there will be roughly 17 students added to each grade in the neighboring schools. At Prices Fort Elementary, that amounts to 102 students, 17 students in each of the 6K through 5 grades. That's 102 students on a school that currently has 400 and, where is the number, 420-some students, 424 students. A 25% increase from one single community is an extreme impact on the area. And I know that there's a claim that the school can handle up to 650, but I cannot possibly imagine two of my daughters go to Prices Fort Elementary, and I can't imagine how you could squeeze another 50% or 200 students, given there's not a single empty classroom in that school. Secondly, I think the impact on the traffic, although following all of the standard state regulations for how to evaluate traffic impact, I think it's clear that those guidelines are all very general, and are planned to be something that applies to any general area. But when you think about any specific area, you can imagine that those rules don't necessarily apply to those specific cases. And so the analysis in that particular development, I think, fails on several areas. One is, it assumes that all of the traffic in the morning, for example, during the rush hour time is gonna be distributed evenly over a couple of hours, where in fact, we all know that one of the blessings of living in a place like this is that we have rush 15 minutes, not rush hour. And so if you do the analysis, take into that into account, take into account that although the analysis assumes that a third of the traffic's gonna turn right towards Prices Fort and Radford, in reality, the vast majority of people are gonna be moving towards Blacksburg and 460. When you take into account the fact that, that the, I'm sorry, I have one other point there, just give me a second to find it. Okay, is my time? Is that five minutes? Okay, well, I'm very sorry. I did send you an email that has some recommendations. I would like to strongly encourage you to deny this application and ask the developers to come back with a plan that has fewer dwellings so that we can actually have something which is beneficial to all of Prices Fort. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and board members, our next speaker is Rob Childs.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rob Childs. I live at 1855 Stratford View Drive in Sterling Manor. I'm also the president of the Sterling Manor homeowners association and a former town planner for Blacksburg. I believe the preserve, the same development Mr. Heflin was talking about, has little in common with the Prices Fort Village and comprehensive plans. Proposal was very well marketed calling undevelopable land open space, telling us that the apartments and townhouses are low-density, will not only be afforded by housing, but consist only of older folks, professionals, and/or graduate students. I oppose this proposal and ask for you to disapprove this development until something that conforms with the plans is submitted. A member of the planning commission in the first meeting on this subject asserted that I was just afraid of change in my opposition to this proposal. Having grown up in Loudoun County, I watched all the farmland disappear, so I am afraid of change when the proposal looks nothing like our adopted plans. There were never any apartments or townhouses for this area in the Prices Fort Village Plan or the comprehensive plan. Yes, the nature of B and D doesn't allow for alterations in the setbacks and lot sizes, but this proposal seems to do it in a very radical way. There was a mention of affordable housing in the area, but what does this mean? It's difficult to make the argument that the housing here will be affordable if we don't have at least a range of what the cost will be. If the housing is truly affordable, then there will be many students living there. With respect to the high-density development in this proposal, the fact that the student and professional lifestyle is incompatible... and professional lifestyle is incompatible no matter what the purveyor of apartments or the marketer of the development tells me. And while private covenants and restrictions may limit residential makeup in the multi-use area on paper, these may or may not be enforced by a homeowner association. It would be great to have nothing but grad students, mature folks, and young professionals living in the multi-unit areas, but that never happens, and it won't happen here. As many have said, traffic is a great concern, but the planning commission stated to me that it's not the fault of the developer that there is so much traffic on Prices Fort Road. We're also told that everyone knows that development is coming to Prices Fort. When I watched the video of the meeting, a comment was made that we just have to wait for, then complain about the lack of roads, and then maybe we will get the infrastructure. If we know that development is coming, why have we done nothing about it? When I was town planner for Blacksburg 25 years ago, I saw Montgomery County plan for Southgate Connector and Merrimack Road improvements. Southgate Connector will give Thomas Lane folks and others another route, though believing that some of the coming headache of 2,700 cars per day that will be added to Prices Fort for the addition of Preserve. Finally, each iteration of the plan seems to have less preservation in the Preserve. The latest proposal removes the language "preserving existing trees" while telling how environmentally sensitive it is. I request as a property owner and as the HOA president that any trees on the boundary of Sterling Manor be preserved. I fully expect this request, but I'm not going to stand here and say I will move because Montgomery County will get taxes from whoever buys my house, and no one will care if I move or not. But I do care about the area, and I say we have one chance to get this right. Please follow the Prices Fort Village and Comprehensive Plans. I respectfully ask that you disapprove this request.
Thank you.
That's all we have signed up for now. If anybody else would like to speak, come forward and state your name and address. You have five minutes.
My name is Robbie Jones. I live at 996 Cole Holler Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm here tonight speaking as an individual and as a candidate for District D. I am also here tonight asking you to support the funding request of Montgomery County Public Schools. I'm a support staff, and I can speak for support staff. I see how, in my building, I have nine custodians that work with me. I'm the only one that's not the sole provider in my building for my family. All the others are sole providers for their families. They have two and three jobs. I have a custodian that works a full-time job in the day, and then comes to work at 2:00 and works a full-time job in the evening till 10:30, five days a week, just to make ends meet. I have custodians that have to borrow money for gasoline to get to work. As for the teacher side, I have teachers riding in right behind me at a quarter to 6:00 in the morning, and there's teachers there that my custodians have to run out at 10:30 at night, because they've got to get their job done. I don't think we can put a price on what we do. What they ask for to me is not enough. We are responsible for the future of Montgomery County. We are molding the future of Montgomery County. Our students, our children, our grandchildren, our nieces and nephews. We're responsible for them every day. We take pride in that. Again, I asked you to respectfully support school funding. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Chair King, supervisors. My name is Tom Rutledge. I'm project manager of Shaw Development. Just watching here tonight, on behalf of the Preserve at Walnut Springs. With me, I have co-owner and managing member of Shaw Development, David Hagan, and John Neal and Michael Gay with Gay and Neal. I just want to let you all know that we are here, and we're available for any questions, should you have any. I did want to take a second and review in the video from last time. I think I started and I got cut off, but Mr. Hagan talked about how planning commission really worked through this. The supervisors have worked hard. But I also wanted to reiterate, I did during the planning commission meeting, but I got off track a little bit at the last public hearing, and I just wanted to take a second and thank staff. Emily and Bree went well above and beyond. They made some wonderful comments. They gave me some great direction. And Shaw Development and myself, we work in a lot of localities, but it is -- I don't know quite how to say that. It is an honor to be able to ask the most stupid question you've ever asked in your life and get a professional answer and just teamwork concept. And I just wanted to convey that to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Georgia Smith won't come back.
Didn't get enough?
The first.
You couldn't get enough the first time?
My name's David Clark. I found a number on the website. I thought I'd give you. I gave a big hint for the date, I mean, the stuff, but there's a website. It's my.vdotvirginia, all spelled out, dot gov. And it's, you can get there from our regular website, but that's the one where you can go on, and it's got little buttons about, you know, to specify what the problem is. The phone number is also, you can call instead of doing it on there. And it spells FOR, F-O-R-R-O-E-D. I don't want to spell it out, but that is the number, so there you go.
Thanks, Dave.
Javator Vinajat, 1600 Winslow Drive. Unfortunately, I was not here for the Walnut Springs rezoning public hearing. I have a couple of serious concerns. One is traffic. It seems that the very limited traffic study done by the developer lacks applications. Due to the inherent high variability in traffic counts, it is important that we include counts of multiple days. Last week, we did our own counts for two days, that's limited also, and compared the averages with that of the developers. There was a 1.6% difference translating to a 1.25 annual growth rate. If trusted, this number is 2.5 times higher than the annual growth rate assumed in the developer's calculations. Although 0.5% annual growth rate is considered adequate by some of the VDOT engineers, this is not a golden number by any means and disputed by some of the VDOT's engineers. A wrong annual growth rate has serious effects on calculation of the level of services at involved intersections. Another issue is that the traffic study did not include any of the intersections in the town of Blacksburg. Although this may have not been required, but the impact of this development on the level of services for those intersections will have an overwhelming consequence for all drivers using Prices Fort Road. So I strongly urge the board to require a more comprehensive traffic study for this rezoning application and work with the town of Blacksburg for a more comprehensive approach to solve the problems that already exist in that major roadway. Last year, I was very much encouraged when Mr. Talk, in the presence of several other board members, mentioned during a Blacksburg Town Council meeting that there were many situations that the county and the town could work together. I believe this is one of those instances. My other concern is the issue of the stormwater management during the construction. Almost all large developments fail proper sediment control practices during medium-to-large rain events, and thus much sediment enter our creeks and rivers. I do not think this development would be any different. Therefore, I ask the county to instruct the engineers to watch for those failures and do not rely on their routine inspections. Checking the construction site during and shortly after major storm events is required. The presence of the wetlands makes the extra inspections even more urgent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Nancy Gibson. I live at 742nd Street here in town. I am an employee of Montgomery County and proud to say so. I've been an employee and a teacher in Montgomery County for six years. I have owned a home in this county since December of '91. I'm very invested in this county. I want to see our county employees have a decent living wage that they don't have to work two and three jobs to support themselves. I know after I work my 65- to 70-hour week during the school year, I still have to work during the summer in order to make ends meet. I think as a dedicated employee and citizen of this county, you all need to consider giving the employees the opportunity to earn a living wage and not wear themselves out and not want to move to another county. I would support a 2% or more tax rate hike, and I'm interested in having no funds earmarked and put it in the general fund and allow the school board to give the employees raises. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Is anyone else? Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close the address.
Addendum. Mr. Chair, we do have one addendum item this evening that is listed as Item C under work session this evening, and that's conversion of the Ryner Fire Department to the Ryner Rescue Squad Facility. We had left that out inadvertently last week and have added it tonight if the board is agreeable to that. We need a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Spicicaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Settlemas?
Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Spicicaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Settlemas?
Is there a motion to go into work session?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, you call roll, please. I think she's going.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Spicicaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Settlemas?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, first item on the work session this evening is an update from Kevin Burke with the Regional Commission on the county's efforts on a broadband planning grant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I had a presentation along. I'm not sure if I queue that up over here. With David Clark giving us a web address to upload hot holes, we might get more bandwidth in the county. So we're going to try to accomplish that in our broadband planning grant here. Thank you. Okay. So the Regional Commission's been involved with broadband planning for well over a decade now. We've gotten some major accomplishments delivered in Middle Mile, which is basically the ID1 corridor of bandwidth running through the region. And the greatest challenge that I think all of our communities are facing now is getting bandwidth to the end user, getting it to their homes and to the businesses. So our organization worked with the county late fall to submit a letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development, asking for planning grant funds to help figure out paths forward for increasing bandwidth across the county. We received a response from the Department of Housing and Community Development late fall, and they have a fairly prescriptive process for pursuing their planning grant funds. They give you a letter that says, if you accomplish these tasks, we'll release initial $3,000 to you. And then after you do these additional tasks, we will make available a full $30,000. And they had a caveat in that letter that says, this may or may not cover your full expenses in going down the path we're setting forward. So I'm going to set that up for you on what that process looks like. To receive the letter, and we did a scan across the region to figure out where the other communities are with their broadband planning. Pulaski County, Giles County, and Floyd County all have fairly recent broadband plans. And so we reached out to the city of Radford, and they were interested in economy of scales here. It looks like they have an opportunity to work together with the city of Radford on this. So one of the first steps in this process is a public meeting, which tonight suffices for that item. And then there is population of a management team, and I will identify the typical folks that you would want to consider for that. There is a business and community needs survey that's required. There was a survey that was done in 2016, and this would be fairly similar to that. It might be additional questions that you all may be interested to ask, which we can incorporate. There would be a request for proposals for consulting services, and this is the point where you'll get a lot more information than what you've had to work with in the past. Then there will be a second management team, and those management teams will help you advise through the process. So who's involved? Montgomery County, of course, and the city of Radford is interested. We've had preliminary conversations with both towns, Blacksburg and Christiansburg, and they're certainly willing, or the doors open for them to participate, again, with economy of scale, and there may be cost share involved if consultant services go beyond what the grants budget would provide for. And then our organization, the Regional Commission, we're providing staff support to the county on administration, as well as conducting the community and business surveying. When you get a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they talk about their management team, these are some of the common entities they like to tap, as well as some people that we've talked with county staff with about who they would like to have involved. So they like to see elected member participate from the board supervisors, and if any of the councils as well. School board representative, folks from the administration, economic development, chambers of commerce, citizen representatives who have an interest in the space. A lot of times, the information and technology departments are very helpful. Public information office with the county to be able to help promote and share the word of the activities underway. Higher education, since it's such a large aspect of our community here, as well as major employers. So breaking down that letter and the tasks that lay ahead, we have a request for proposal that's in a draft form currently, and that was sent over to the Department of Housing and Community Development today for preliminary review, and hope to be able to release that soon. And then, at the same time of releasing the RFP, we've talked about releasing, doing a press release, so everybody in the community is aware that the RFP is out there, and the county would be involved in this broadband planning effort. We also need to populate that management team. As we had some entities, now we need to get names and phone numbers and email addresses attached to that management team, so we can call our first meeting. There will be public engagement opportunities throughout the process, and that's very important to the DHCD operations. And your management team serves as a public engagement opportunity, your survey. And then we're also looking at the possibility of having a community meeting to really share the findings with everyone at large at the end of this. We do need to involve the current internet service providers, because they may be the solution for a lot of these challenges. We'll engage not just you all, but the elected officials in the two towns and the city, and keeping them up to speed with what we're learning. And then we are hoping to have this, at least substantive information, complete in the fall, because around that timeframe, implementation, funding, opportunities may become available, whether it's through Department of Housing and Community Development, or Appalachian Regional Commission, or some other likely funders. Those typically start opening up in the fall timeframe. The timeline, more specifically, we have the RFP I mentioned. Hopefully, we'll release that later this month, as well as starting to populate the management team with names, and also issuing the press release this month. The community-wide survey, we should be in position to get that underway in April. And also, the first management team, pulling them together in April. Then we want that management team to be involved with the consultant selection process with multiple firms. We'd like that management team to be able to review those and score them, provide that feedback. And then in the fall, we'll be doing elected official presentations and a community meeting, and then hopefully pursue funds in the fall/winter coming up. So that's a quick overview of the Department of Housing and Community Development Planning Grant and what's coming up the next few months. Be happy to take any comments or questions that you may have.
Kevin, thank you for working on that. That's, of course, something that we not only desperately need more of, but something that I've kind of made a priority. And if my fellow board members would allow me, I'd love to be on your management team. So hopefully, we can get this thing going. But thank you for all you have.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mary?
I'm really excited about this, because this has been going on for years and years and years and years. And the Chamber of Commerce had made it one of their top priorities a couple of years ago. So this, and there's the citizens group out there that I know that you've talked to, this is such an important part of our infrastructure. And with the growth that we're going to experience, it's what people, people think that this is something that has to be in place when they move. I mean, it's just like your water, your electricity. And we're a little bit behind time, so I am really, really hoping that this is going to work, and we're going to finally be able to address this in some manner. I'm very excited about it. And Steve, I would support you doing that, and I'd be happy to back you up if you couldn't go.
Two bags, ma'am.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate you looking into this. Couple of questions. As part of the management team, how are you going to choose the community representatives?
That typically falls back to the local government that's participating in this, so it'd probably come to the county administrator to work with you all to identify some names.
And about how many people are going to be on the management team?
Looking at that list, we try to keep it around 10 or 15 at most.
So that would include maybe two or three at most community representatives? Or how, what would you think that would be?
I don't know exactly. Probably two or three. Sounds about appropriate for other planning grants that we've been involved with.
And then administrative rep, meaning Craig's staff?
Or his designated correct.
Including representative from the towns?
If they choose to participate, correct.
And Radford.
Right.
Will the RFP be made public somewhere? Actually, the, what you proposed, I know people know about it, but will the actual RFP be up there?
Yes, we've talked with county staff here, and Heather Hall will help us publish that, so I imagine it'll be posted on the county's website.
Perfect. So you say that there's going to be a community-wide survey in April. It's kind of funny, because people in some of our distant parts of the county don't have internet. So how do they participate in this survey?
Paper will also be available, and libraries will be encouraged to host survey takers. We have lots of daily users of computers at libraries. Certainly, any way that people can reach it. And we've done a lot of paper surveys in the past as well.
And just using my neighborhood as an example, I live within a half a mile of the town limits, and I have not had cable or anything but DSL for the last 25 years that I've lived in my neighborhood. And I've had two new neighbors move into our neighborhood, and they didn't think to ask if we had cable or anything but DSL. They were flabbergasted. So one of them works out of his home and is purely economic development. You know, he's making a good income, and he's spending it here in the county. And the other has two children in the schools and can't imagine how they're going to be able to get all their work done for school. So even within a half a mile of town, and all the neighborhoods around me have it, except for my neighborhood. So we appreciate everything that you're going to do, but not just for my area. But like I said, Steve and I, when we were running a year and a half ago, one of our key things that we were focusing on was broadband expansion, because we have such remote parts of our districts that it's just hard to get communication even. So, thank you. Last question. I had a question. Can you speak just for one minute about the Appalachian Regulatory Funds? Or you said something like that?
Appalachian Regional Commission?
Regional Commission, thank you.
Yes. So they have a couple of funding platforms that might be suitable for implementation. There is the Power Program, and that's for coal-impacted communities. And as communities that are transitioning past coal, and Montgomery County isn't eligible in the county, Giles County is eligible, and we're actually working with them on a broadband implementation project right now that was submitted through the Power Program. So we're seeing some opportunities there. And then, as you're probably aware, the General Assembly this year had an ambitious goal of $50 million for broadband that got scaled back considerably, but there are additional funds there that didn't have access to before. The same people that administer Appalachian Regional Commission funding for the state are the same ones that administer Department of Housing and Community Development. So we're fortunate that they understand the needs and the ones that are investing in this planning grant. So they'll be duly informed as we go throughout.
And so, obviously, Virginia Tech is not part of this management team?
Under higher education, they would be. We've already been in touch with the folks we've been collaborating with over years, over the years there with them, and they're certainly willing to participate.
Can we leverage their coal use?
Right, absolutely. They have a big bandwidth need away from campus as well.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you. There's a lot of places in my district that don't have broadband or internet at all for that matter, or phone service sometimes, so thank you. Any more questions?
No, but I appreciate Supervisor Fidjikowski and Supervisor Biggs' willingness to serve. I know they've already got a lot of commitments, so I think Thursdays are the worst days for Steve. If he could shoot for another day, and I do appreciate them willing to serve.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you, I appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
I do want to mention too, and Kevin mentioned this, Brian Hamilton with Economic Development's been working closely with Kevin and has been our staff liaison. We look forward to moving this project ahead.
Thank you. You got next, Paul?
Yes, sir. Next item under Work Session this evening is discussion of the conversion of the existing Ryner Fire Department to the Ryner Rescue Squad Facility. Jack is here with us from Thompson and Lyttle this evening. This is an item that we discussed at our extended Work Session, your extended Work Session at the end of February. So we're going to get an update on where things are. Jack, appreciate you being with us this evening.
Get some help getting that pulled up. Good evening, everybody. Cherokee, Meadows. Good seeing you all again. Hard to believe it's already been three and a half months since I was last here talking about this, and you provided some direction to me. Hoping to update you on here tonight. Okay. Again, I think it was your November 26 meeting, I was here, and we discussed a number of projects that we're involved with right now. One of those was closely related to the fire station project, and that being the project we're talking about now with moving the rescue squad into the existing Ryner Fire Building. Obviously, that will become vacant very shortly here. In the coming months, hopefully sometime this summer, Mr. King, we're still working hard at getting you all in there. But I can give you a little bit of update on that too as well, if you're interested. So as you all know, the existing Rescue Squad Building is close proximity to the other building. It's separated by the recycle center there, right on Route 8, right in front of the Auburn High School. The current facility is very undersized, about 3,200 square feet. It is in need of several upgrades, just mostly physical upgrades. But the biggest issue is really, it's just, it's outgrown its purpose. And similar to the fire station, which is about 9,300 square feet, we're now looking to relocate that entity into a 19,000 square foot building just down the road. So we all understood that when the building is vacated, that some work needs to be done to that existing firehouse. We reviewed what those issues were, and a lot of them were really just what you'd expect after 20-some years. Unfortunately, while it was maintained well, the systems were only designed to last for about that long, and some of the HVAC equipment is on borrowed time right now. So those are things that would need to be addressed prior to moving the rescue squad into the building. But they had some other needs as well, and we did meet with the rescue squad, with Mr. Roop and Chief Saul also contributed some information, and along with the county engineer and the building official, to review the programmatic needs and what would have to happen to the facility to accommodate them, bringing the facility up to the current building code and ADA requirements. We did arrive at a program that, amazingly enough, is very close to what the size of the facility is. There are a few things that we did determine a way around them to still accommodate their need in the new facility, the old fire station. But our program exercise showed that that was the appropriate size for them to expand into. On the 26th meeting, I presented to you a number of options. I think we had as many as five, and then maybe one or two subsets of that. And those proposals ranged in cost from the low end of about $430,000, those total bare bones, to $1.6 million and everywhere in between. The first two options, where you see depicted here in plan form, were the most expensive ones, and really tried to do a full-out attempt to address all the programmatic needs. Of course, they were the most expensive as well. The more desirable one at the following meeting was the Option 5, which showed minimal to no upgrades to the existing building, but it did accommodate the program by providing bunks in the facility. And we would utilize one of the existing bays within the existing equipment bay area. So everybody was in agreement that the Option 5 sounded good, but, you know, really, the Board wanted to make sure that the rescue squad went into a facility that accommodated their needs and into the future. So we went back, took a closer look at some of those needs. A lot of those had to do with just general refurbishment and upgrade to the existing, particularly the administrative part of the building. New finishes, new ceilings, LED lighting throughout the facility, both in the administrative areas as well as the high bay equipment areas, new appliances, all those things that obviously has served their time well, but has long since gone in terms of their usefulness. And then there is a number of what we would term as fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, or FF and E items. And those are illustrated here on the right side of the column here. But we want to make sure funds were available, that the facility would be able to operate come day one. And those were the items that the Board asked me to go back and review our plans and review the cost estimates, and see what it would be to incorporate those into our Option 5 plan that we had before. So this is the Option 5 plan. You can see in the lower right-hand corner the current facility, so we're not changing a whole lot to the, what's in the light blue area right now, other than upgrading all the finishes within that area. We're redoing the toilet rooms completely, redoing the ceilings and the lighting, new HVAC, some of the things that you can't see and some of the things you'll see every day. So that is included in our costs. But then you see on the far right side, that's the actual construction work, where we're going to utilize one of the existing bays, it's about 1,500 total square feet. And by locating it there, that's one of the bays, it's not a drive-through bay, so we're not limiting the use within the equipment area. You can see the other three remaining bays all have doors, red doors in the front and back. We can accommodate this portion with a limited area sprinkler, which controls our costs on that portion of the building. And we separate it from the equipment area with a full height to our fire separating wall. So when it's all said and done, we were able to modify the cost for all the new construction, for the renovation and refurbishment throughout, for all the requested furnishings and equipment and some of the software programs as well, and contingency in all of those costs for, I believe it was appropriation of $950,000. So happy to say that I think we have a good plan. I think as far as undertaking this and getting the work done, that this work can be bid in a timely fashion, it should not take too long to actually get plans out on the street to receive bids. I don't know what the county's timeframe is for all that, but, you know, if we're just looking in a vacuum here, I think within a two-month period, we can have documents ready for bidding. That's my update for tonight. Do you have any questions? Be happy to address those.
I don't have any questions. I like Option 5. I like the fact that they're addressing some of the concerns that members had about the bathrooms, the tile floor that's coming up. I would like to see us vote on this right away. So we've got the Fire Department moving out, let's get the rescue squad moving in to this facility. And so I would like to see it on the agenda if we could in a few weeks, so we could get the bids out, if that's a possibility.
And one of the reasons we had this in Work Session tonight was to see if there was consensus for that very decision, because if there is, we will have an appropriation for you at an upcoming meeting to keep this moving right along.
Where would the appropriations be from?
Carol, do you want to address that? We talked about it at-
The extended Work Session.
Extended Work Session, but... Carol's the keeper of all the change, so I thought-
All the minions. What we talked about at the Work Session was the fact that we have some monies already in the capital fund for projects. We also had some monies remaining at the end fiscal year '18. So we had put, I had shown those funds as being a source for the project funds for this and for some other capital projects. So I'm sorry if we didn't get you a copy of that presentation, but I'll be happy to do so.
Thank you.
But that, in essence, is where it would come from. We would move the funds to a project account for this specific project, and we do have those sources available.
Thank you.
Jack? Two bags, ma'am.
Questions? One of your earlier slides at the bottom, it was splitting out some of the square footage. There was something called circulation slash grossing of 30%. I have no idea what that means.
This is a very common form to address the specific needs. You know, when we meet with any client, they say, "Well, we're going to need three offices. We're going to need..." Obviously, we know there's toilets that are based on the occupancy of the building, so those sorts of things. So we would ordinarily put them in tabular form with known square footages to accommodate those sizes. And then, nobody says, "Now I need, of course, a hallway to get to those spaces." So ordinarily, we would use a grossing factor to cover circulation, which would be those interstitial spaces, and it would also account for wall thicknesses, things like that. So it's very common, and that's a typical portion of the overall square footage that that would take up. Some, if you're talking about the warehouse space, it would be a small number. If you're talking about maybe classrooms or housing, it'd be a higher number.
And then, can you go back to the slide that had all the options on it? You mentioned that one, you mentioned that Option 5 was the one that had the bunk rooms, but 3 and 4 have bunk rooms in it. What's the difference between 3 and 4?
See if I remember. 3... Oh, 3 totally reassigned the existing training room. So we'd lose the training room, and we sub-divided that into bump spaces. 4 allowed for a modular unit that would be brought to the site, would be standalone, and the cost for that modular unit was not in that price. I don't think anybody really thought that was a good solution. But worth exploring, if anybody asks, because they do make those modular units specifically for that sort of thing.
Sure. And then if you could go to Option 5, the floor plan, I don't know what day in the right-hand, lower right-hand corner is.
That is just the day room outside. It's, I guess, would be the equivalent of a living room, but it's-
Okay.
That's where we are.
Go back one slide. Option 12. They don't have automatic garage door openers now?
They're- Closers.
Closers?
Closers, yes.
Yeah.
I think there are one, but they're so old, they don't function correctly, so the whole mechanism has to be replaced.
And then number 18, stripping and waxing floors, so they're not going to get new floors- floors?
Deferred maintenance. Just, that's just in the bay area. We'd be reworking that where the truck phase are.
Okay. And could you tell, the last question, cost of construction? If we did this now versus in three years, do you, I mean, you're in this world, how much cost of instruction, construction goes up?
What we figured on our estimate really from November was a 3% escalation that gets probably to late 2019. So we've assumed 3% that's in that, that number. And right now, we've been, from the last, let's say, year and a half, we've been tracking about a 3% escalation per year. So three years, it compounds.
And that, and that 950,000, if I remember correctly, includes some contingency, so hopefully-
There's a contingency in there, 10%.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Once you get started on this project, what's your timeframe to have it done?
That's what I was saying before, in a vacuum here, if you said tomorrow, I would say that we could have documents out to bid in less than two months.
I mean, once you start construction on it?
Um-
Week?
I can get a little bit of a flashback answer, two weeks. I won't be constructing it, but I think it's probably a timeframe, you know, conservatively, three months. I think there's a few long lead items, you know, the HVAC equipment and hardware, those types of things. It's not complicated work. It wouldn't be bad if we did get in later in the year. It's virtually all interior work, so you're not impacted by the weather. And whether it's rain or cold weather, you're not impacted.
Okay. Any more questions?
And Mr. Chair, what we'd like to seek tonight is just if there's consensus to keep moving forward with the project, we'll have something back before the board on an upcoming agenda. I see thumbs, thank you.
Me too.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure. The last item we have under work session this evening is the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. And as we talked at the budget presentation, and I've talked with several of you over the last week, really, the primary discussion item we need to have this evening is to have the board determine what you would propose as the advertised tax rate and budget. And as I've said to several folks, the advertised tax rate and budget is, in essence, the maximum amount for the tax rate and the budget that the board's willing to consider. Once you establish the advertised tax rate and budget, you can always go down from there. You can't increase from there. The advertised tax rate and budget is especially important this year because it's a reassessment year, and there's some legal requirements related to the advertising that we have to do, related to the revenue neutral tax rate, and also the proposed tax rate and budget. So it's very critical that we get that established as early as possible. As I've mentioned to a couple of you, we'll have several meetings between now and the public hearing on April 4th, and then the time that we've scheduled to adopt, or ask you to adopt the budget on April 15th regarding specific questions related to the budget. But really, we would hope your focus this evening would be on discussion of where you'd like to see the advertised tax rate and budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And with that, let's open for discussion.
Do you want to start? I can't, I'm last.
I'll jump in. I'm supportive of the county administrator's recommendation of the 89 cents per hundred and assessed value and to maintain all other taxes as they are. And I guess that would give us a budget of, what, 201 million? And I have been through this. I like the county administrator's presentation of trying to go ahead and really make a dent in being able to take a positive step forward to plan and fund for some of our current needs. I also, I'm glad we have the flexibility to look at the budget, because I have also heard from other people in regards to schools about maybe doing something with that revenue so that salaries on both sides, county and schools, can be addressed in an effective manner. So I'm, I am supportive of leaving it where it is and leaving all other taxes where they are.
I'm in the same position as Supervisor Biggs. I said for many years that in my mind, this is how we deal with inflation. Everything that the county is buying is more expensive. Everything, the school board, everything on our budget is goes up. And the reassessment is our way of dealing with inflation. And so in my mind, this is, 89 cents is the right thing to do. And tonight's discussion is about the tax rate, and there'll be a lot of other discussions about how that, the budget itself should work. But I'm prepared to support 89 cents and keeping all other taxes where they're, at their current levels.
Secretary Shepard? I'll say, I will support the, yeah, that, the budget at 89 cents tonight. I'm already getting calls complaining about raising the taxes. And I'll leave it at that.
Well, I think in board's past, I think this has been a problem, from what I can tell, is from what Supervisor Tuck had said, this is the county's way of kind of keeping up with all the costs and expenses that the county incurs. And this is probably long overdue. So I also am in favor of keeping it at 89 cents, the same tax rate, and also all the other tax rates, maintain the same. We wouldn't be able to do with the schools what we, what we plan on doing. I liked the budget presentation as it was, as I went through it, I found several things that I had questions for, but the further I went through it, the questions were answered. So I, I think it's a good plan, and I support it.
Awesome. I also, I mean, it sounds pretty broadly understood that we're all kind of saying that we're in support, not all yet, but I also am in support of keeping the tax rate at 89 cents. There are some things that I personally want to have conversations with all of you about. And I'll just, one of them, and this is actually, when you look at the scale of our budget, but one of the items that I did want to talk to you guys about was funding for onward NRV. And so I'll be reaching out to each of you individually, but I would like for us to be able to have a discussion about that at a future meeting where we're not just discussing setting the tax rate. And then I know that there's been some concerns also brought up about the schools that we also need to have some discussion on as well. But as far as for tonight's purposes, I would be in full support of advertising at 89 cents.
Supervisor Moe?
I also would be in support of increasing our tax rate to 89 cents and not letting it drop to 83 cents. And I understand the burden that puts on people, again, in our remote ends of our county. That's pretty tough. The average rate increase in the reassessment was eight cents, 8% rather. So by default, people are paying more to the county. And that's pretty tough, so. But I did want to talk about a couple of things that I'm not quite sure I agree with. And one is, I've, I've found it odd that, but in a good, you know, it's positive also, the one and a half cent set aside for capital, what is it, capital improvement, capital budget for the school, school capital budget. I think I would encourage us to allow the school district, the school division to determine where that 1.5 cent should go. A lot of conversations from, in public address was about teacher salaries. I agree that the teachers should have raises even beyond what the state says that, you know, that that's in their budget. I believe that's three and a half percent, which piggybacks on last year's increase. And there is hardly any way that I would support a budget if we didn't take advantage of what was in the state budget and fully fund what we needed to do to get that piece for the teachers. And I beg to differ about reassessment, keeping up with inflation, even if we're conservative with inflation at 2% a year, which we know it's more than that. Every four years times 2% is 8%. And we're really only got, not even six cents. So we are falling behind. And in our extended work session at the beginning of last year, I forget the gentleman's name who was facilitating, he said that-
Mike Chandler.
Yep, Mike Chandler, said that increased population doesn't cover the costs as well as businesses do a little bit better. So every year that goes by, we're falling further and further behind as far as keeping up with costs associated with higher population. I also would like to explore what I call right sizing the budget. It's all well and good while we go back 10 years, and it's convenient that 10 years is a nice even number, and many of our charts start 10 years ago. But if we go back a couple more years, we would all see the significant decrease in the state support for our schools, more significantly than any support that the county would get. It's all well and good that we should petition the state for more school funding, but our reality is what it is right now. And I think that the overall county and school division need to work together to make sure that, what I think is the school division feeling more of a burden overall with lack of funding than the whole county as a whole. So if we say that this school division lost, I'm just going to use round numbers, 10% of their funding, and the county had less because the recession, it wasn't 10%. And so I think we all should take the burden of the reduction in funding for schools. So I'd like to work with our county staff to see what that looks like. And, and looking back a couple of years before 10 years will help us perhaps see maybe a fairer share of overall funding for our whole county. That's it.
Couple of things in response. It is the equivalent of a six cents tax increase, but you've got to remember where tax rate is at 89 cents. So that by factoring inflation and then factoring in our growth, we're actually growing, and when you encompass this, we're far surpassing inflation. When you take into our annual growth every year and income, and you put that towards schools, and that addresses a lot of the inflation levels on an annual basis, and then you factor in on top of that, this reassessment, you more than exceed the rate of inflation, even at the current rates. But at the same time, the growth, there is growth, and we have to deal with the fact that we do have more citizens, and that's part of the reason for growth as well. But I'm willing to discuss those things, but tonight, in my mind, it's the tax rate. And we can get into the other, the nuts and bolts as we go through. I know that there was a lot of, there was several teachers from the Teachers Association that spoke about that. But I remember two years ago, when I had a lot of emails from citizens, a lot, I, Principal of Christiansburg High School, said we need to set aside money for school capital, sent me an email specifically. I had a lot of residents from my district talking about that we need to set aside school capital, and I'm willing to listen. And one of my favorite professors always asked the question, when was the last time you changed your mind? And that's an important question to ask, and it's, I think, a sign of strength when you change your mind, not a sign of weakness necessarily. So I'm willing to listen on this issue. But I will say, I do remember those emails from two years ago, when folks were saying, we got to set aside the exact money that the county administrator has set aside.
I appreciate you, can I respond?
Yeah.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Chris, because I wasn't here two years ago. So thank you. But I'd like to address the inflation. If you go back to what Mike Chandler said, more population is not enough to pay for the needs of that population. So standalone inflation and/or rate increase with this reassessment is not keeping up also. Again, I don't think we need to debate this either right now. I'm all for, I think we all have the consensus, so I'd like to make the motion. Oh, you get to talk.
Yeah, you can talk.
And we're in-
And we're in work session.
Okay.
Then you can do it.
Soon as we come out, we can do that.
Any more discussion? I'm in favor of leaving the tax rate the way it is. And I do appreciate the county staff for the hard work they've done, and I do appreciate the school staff for what they've done, when they found out, you know, what we had to give, they worked with, and I do appreciate that. Is any more discussion? Do you have a motion to move out of work session?
Move to come out of work session.
Second, third.
Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Caskin?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven hours.
Need a few minutes?
Well, you've got old business.
Old business. I was saying, you need a break.
Oh, break? Anyone need a break?
Five-minute break wouldn't be bad.
Okay.
I change my mind.
Okay.
We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back, I can get my glass over there.
8:45.
8:45, huh? Got a meeting back to order.
Mr. Chair, our next item is old business, and we have consideration of a rezoning for Shaw Development LLC for Walnut Springs.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. I don't want anybody to think that I don't care about what happens in the community, because I do, and I've lost sleep over to prove a point. I do believe this will be a good thing. However, there's a traffic issue. The build-out is 15 years. I look forward to that kind of working itself out in various ways, one being the Parkway down Price Mountain. I think that'll fix a lot of, lot of issues, because I drive a school bus, and that's on my route, and I see probably twice as many vehicles coming from Radford as I see coming out of McCoy or Brooksfield or anywhere else. It all comes from Radford. Statement that Mr. Hagan made in front of us the last meeting was, you know, if you went to Fairland and bought land and built a development, it's still going to be the traffic on Price Fort Road, and I believe that. So I do believe this will be a good thing, because we'll be gaining the revenue from the taxes. Our restaurants and stuff will be gaining from business. Couple of emails addressed saying we shouldn't try to fill the resident needs for Virginia Tech. And I don't think we're doing that. I know people in the district, in the county, people have said something about student housing.
housing. I've got, I know people in the county, in the district that's in the county that have rental properties that have rented for years. As close as they ever get to student population is grad students because all the other students want to be in town where they can catch the bus. There's no bus service there. I've gotten emails and calls both, both ways, probably more for it, actually. So that being these, that's all I have to say.
Any more discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think that Supervisor Shepherd is correct. And I was going to ask at the next liaison meeting that you have when Virginia Tech is present to talk about whether we could start moving forward, whether it's Go Virginia or some type of funding to start looking at that Parkway. You know, we're talking about a 15 year buildout, but maybe we start now and not just talking with, with Virginia Tech, but also talking and trying to address perhaps Radford and Pulaski because this would be a connection that would help them to be closer to the CRC and some of the companies that are coming to Blacksburg and growing together. And so I would ask if that could be a topic at the upcoming liaison breakfast that you have with Virginia Tech, the school board and the two towns.
Absolutely.
Okay. As maybe, you know, I always ask the board member if a development is going to be in their district, you know, how they feel about it, what they think about it, do they support it or not? And so Darryl and I have communicated on this issue and, and I'm going to support him and I'm going to support the development. As I talked to John Neal, he knew I was concerned about the density and about the road also. And I think that, I think we're going to, we're going to end up having to address that road in some manner because right now, if you look at the traffic on Price's Fork or you go there when it's going to be school or after school or you're having, you know, folks come into Virginia Tech, it's a very busy road. And so I'm glad the buildout is 15 years. And so I just wanted to state that I will be supporting Darryl on this.
Any more discussion?
I was wondering if I could ask Ms. Gibson a couple of questions and then Shaw Development a couple of questions. Is that possible at this time?
All right.
Up to the chair. Up to the chair.
Anything by having?
I think that it's fine if she's got some questions that need to be answered.
I think you can answer these without your notes, Ms. Gibson. I'm hoping anyway. So the comprehensive plan included this area of the county, including this parcel. That's correct, right? For the Price's Fork Village?
That's correct.
And it was deemed to be, what zoning for this parcel?
So the comp plan doesn't speak to zoning. It does speak to designations.
Okay.
Designated as low density residential.
And so low density residential could have more than 341 units on it?
Yes, it could have up to five units per acre as long as water and sewer were available.
No matter how they slice and dice it, whether they have all the units in one corner, right? It's sort of like what happened in Clay Street. They could have had all their little units right in the corner, but because they had however many acres, that's how you measure it. Is that correct?
The density is measured on gross acreage, yep.
So when does like the density of an apartment building on one parcel, one part of the property matter? It doesn't, is that true?
If the zoning allows for multifamily. So in this case, it does, the request does, but that's the only time we really speak to the uses.
Okay.
So the density and uses are not always talked about in concert.
Okay. And then I want to talk about the traffic. As Supervisor Tuck talked about the Parkway, I think it's a super great idea that if we can get moving on that Parkway, you know, that would solve a lot of our needs. So in your presentation last time, you said we were classified as an E, which isn't an F, but an E level of traffic. And that's part of the reason why you were not supporting this.
The entrance movements at AM and PMP core level of service E, that's correct.
And if it was F, could we still approve it? There's no drop dead line, is that true?
If it were F, it likely would not be able to obtain a V dot entrance.
Okay. So how far from F were we in relative terms? Did you have any?
I do not remember exactly the, the, the level of service is measured in seconds of delay, so I don't know how many seconds difference we were at.
Away, uh huh. But if we had that Parkway, it opened it up pretty significantly, I would expect, right?
That is the concept of the connector road. It would be limited access, yes.
And the informal traffic study that was done by our citizens saying that two days averages could potentially, I know enough about statistics that of course you've got a variance there and, you know, two days isn't 365 days and all this kind of stuff. But if there was projected to have more growth, would that push us to F, you know, to the magnitude that the citizen said?
I'm not sure I can speculate on that, but as far as the annual growth rate that was given to the applicant by V dot, the rate that had to be used for the study.
And they have no choice but to use that rate? Just give me a second because I've. And then what can we do about stormwater and extra inspections? Can the county do anything about that?
Well, the stormwater design will be evaluated during a site plan. If there's concerns that come up during then, they would be noted at the time. But our, our staff does both the regularly scheduled stormwater as well as after large event stormwater already, particularly when something's under construction.
So I'm used to the MVP being my district and they've put in tons of different things to help hold that mud in, but it doesn't work. So when you see something that doesn't work in a general construction like this, what do you do? Can you just speak to that a little bit?
I don't think that the amount of cut and grading is going to be comparable or as finite. They'll be doing portions stabilizing, portions stabilizing. So it's a different type of construction project, but I can't speak specifically to what measures they might be looking for. That's, that's not, that's not under my purview. So I don't, I don't want to misspeak on that.
I see what you're saying, okay. That's all the questions I have for you. Whether Mr. Neal or Tom want to come up?
Let's both of us go.
Okay.
Supervisor Bone, I would like to state that we are required to, any land disturbance over one acre of land requires a general permit through DEQ. And we are required as well as the contractor to do these every two week inspection and then also within 24 hours after any measurable rainfall event. And in the event that we have measures in, erosion seven control measures in that do not work or overwhelmed by, you know, one of these freak storms that come through and stuff like that, we'll, we'll do everything we can to supersede what's required by code to address those issues the next time because it's definitely expensive for us to go back.
Could you speak to the existing trees between the Preserve and the Sterling Manor?
I will assure you that any tree that can remain will remain. That's from a development standpoint and most of our roads and lot, lot grading and everything is closer to the roads. But there's nothing that would prohibit a landowner from going in there and clearing the trees out. No, there's not.
And could you speak to the, the question about affordable housing?
Well, affordable housing is definitely something that we're trying to do with the smaller sized lots. But affordable housing in Blacksburg versus affordable housing in Elliston versus affordable housing in Riner, I mean, it's kind of all over the, all over the place. So we'll just, we'll do our studies and see what the, what it can support, what niche is there. I wish Kevin Byrd was still here because we talked, we're looking at one in Pulaski and we're trying to hit that 250 range. And the reason in Pulaski, you've got Harons Landing and you've got older homes. There's really nothing in that middle of the road. Affordable housing here could be 275. I just, I, I would like to give you a range, but I feel like I need more data to give you that range on the smaller lot size lines.
And lastly, for the, you know, the V dot entrance, is there, you know, I assume that there might be signs saying, you know, maybe there's a turn coming up or it's probably not required to have a flashing light that, that, you know, hey, be careful kind of thing because we're all concerned about that traffic, right? And for, for your residents to come on out, for people to turn, you know, it's just a really dangerous place, so.
Absolutely. And like Supervisor Shepherd said, Mr. Hagan hit the nail on the head, you know, if somebody's developing Pulaski, they're still hitting that corridor. V dot does not, and Paul Brown, the V dot spokesman, said that night at Planning Commission Public hearing, V dot does not have a maximum. V dot has a minimum and we achieve all those requirements.
With about how much room for error? Do you have any sense?
I'm not sure room, an error, but you know.
You know, I guess room for, within the, it's not error, you know, it's like if you take one data point versus two versus 365, we'd get a real number, right?
I don't know that I can give you a specific number on that. All of that plays into, and those numbers vary greatly depending on the adjacent, you know, oncoming traffic and opposing traffic of the existing road as well as what you're coming out, as, as well as the right turns and left turns. I think the thing probably to keep in mind is that level of service E is only for our entrance exiting on the Price Fork Road. Price Fork Road itself still has a level of service, I think they called it A minus. I think somebody called it A minus. So one of the things to keep in mind is the impact on Price's Fork Road traffic, that is going to maintain its free flow because we add it in both the right turn lane into the development as well as a left turn lane into the development.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Is it any more questions? Thank you all.
Again, thank you all.
No more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
I'm going to abstain from voting on this project with, due to my relationship with the developer.
Six ayes, one of us abstain.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, next item on our agenda, actually, first item is new business on our agenda this evening is establish the advertised tax rate and advertised fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. You have a resolution in your packet that is a fill in the blank resolution that, and I think by consensus, I'll read this if you'd like, what I sensed from the work session is be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Montgomery, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors hereby authorizes the county administrator to advertise a real estate tax rate of 89 cents per $100 of assessed valuation of real estate based on 100% of fair market value. Yet further resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Montgomery, Virginia hereby authorizes the county administrator to advertise a fiscal year 2019-2020 budget in the amount of $201,3581. That was what I picked up through consensus if that's so moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
With the footnote, it's for the advertised budget.
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Mr. Chair, next item we have is the HS Tejas subdivision additional acreage. You have a resolution in your packet this evening authorizing additional acreage to be added to the HS Tejas subdivision, granted approval to use private street as access.
I would make a motion on that.
A second.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, Mr. Chair, is proclamation declaring March as American Red Cross Month.
Motion? So moved?
Second. Let Darryl do it.
So. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Last item of new business, Mr. Chair, is a proclamation for Take Back the Night Rally, Take Back the Night Rally and March. The rally in March will be held Thursday, March 28th, beginning at 7:00 PM.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Who have I forgot? Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Next, this is county administrator report. County. County attorney. I don't have my glasses on, Marty, sorry.
Well, I don't report English.
You just knew he was going to say that.
No, no, see, he can go a few times. County attorney, report.
Mr. Chair, under my report, just a couple of meetings that I'd like to mention. Last week I had an opportunity to attend a presentation over at Radford University from a representative from the Federal Reserve of Richmond. I appreciate those opportunities to go over to Radford every now and then as well. We have a lot of interaction with Virginia Tech, but we try to keep a relationship with Radford University as well, even though my alma mater beat them in basketball yesterday. I had to mention that, I'm sorry. But we try to, we try to keep the relationship strong with the Radford as well. Also had an opportunity last week, I was invited over to the Virginia Tech Career and Research Institute to talk with the group over there about how Montgomery County can have a more active role in working with the group there. And they also mentioned that if this board is interested, that they would like to entertain this board for a tour sometime in the future. I said, I can't speak for the board, but I feel like if there's an invitation extended, they'd be more than glad to come over. It's a, it's a really neat facility over there. Michael Friedlander and the group there is doing some amazing things in that, in that facility. Also last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend the ACE reception over at the Merriman Center at Virginia Tech. Couple of board members were there as well. Very nice to see a large community turnout for that program. And this Friday, I'll be representing the county and our regional tourism office at the grand reopening of Hartwood down in Abingdon. I don't know if you've ever had the opportunity to stop at that facility. They have really, if you will, reinvented their purpose and programming down there. And as the Chair of the Tourism Operating Board, I've been asked to come down and be a part of that event on Friday. So that's my report.
Supervisor Bone?
I would like to pick up where I started last year and that is talking about a couple of businesses in District A that I think are pretty outstanding. One is Slate Creek Construction and the other one is Treble. It's a, it's a personal type of health. What do you call it? Advising, planning, you know, they do the athletic stuff and dietary stuff and all around health. And Slate Creek Construction does.